Are there any agenda item deletions? Thank you. Our consent agenda is Item A, Claims for $1,221,232.32, fringes of $84.71. Item B, Minutes to approve our regular board meeting minutes of February 5th, 2019, and our special meeting minutes of February 7th, 2019. Agenda C, Approve Hire of Deborah Lord, Substitute Cook, Nutrition, effective February 7th, 2019. Agenda D, Approve Class C Liquor License for County Line Cafe. Agenda E, Set Public Hearing Date of March 5th, 2019 at 9:35 a.m. Consider Elimination of Hoover Street Bridge Number NBIS 51380 over Interstate 35 as part of the Iowa DOT Local Crossroad Bridge Incentive Program. Agenda F, Set Public Hearing Date of March 5th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. for the Fiscal Year 2013 Budget Hearing. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Consent Agenda approved. We'll come back to our public hearing regarding industrial waste when it's 6:05. And we will go down to Agenda Item 4. Consider the creation of a regional housing trust fund presented by Andrew Collins with possible action.
Thank you. Do you want to come here and speak? Okay. Thank you. Hi, Philip Youngell, my name is Andrew Collins. I'm looking at the planning organization, I'm a senior planner there. You may know me more so with my role as a planner with the staffs, the central Iowa region transportation planning lines of which Warren County and the cities of Norwalk and cities in Eneal are members. So traditionally through that role, I work through that organization to ensure that the $5.5 million a year are allocated out annually to member communities for transportation projects. And through that whole process, we kind of became aware of this opportunity for funding in central Iowa and member communities have asked me to kind of take a look at that and kind of synthesize what that means. So with that PowerPoint, I have some handouts if I can possibly use to kind of... Has more information? Thank you. So I will just kind of get started talking about what it is and why I'm here to request this action. So, starting off on page two, they're defining what a state housing trust fund is. So essentially, every year, the state legislature awards out funding to the Iowa Finance Authority through its state housing trust fund. There are two programs that are operated under that, and that's the local housing trust fund, which is what I'm going to talk to you about today, and then the project-based housing program. So on page three, defining what a local housing trust fund is, it is a 501(c)(3) organization that is set to receive funding from IFA for the state housing trust fund and distribute those dollars in a defined geographic area in accordance with an adopted allocation plan. So the reason I'm here today is to talk to you about a 501(c)(3) local housing trust fund is because on page three, currently, there are only four counties in the state of Iowa that are not part of a local housing trust fund. Those are the counties of Boone, Jasper, Marion, and Corin. There are 20, 24 local housing trust funds that have been set up across the state. And so what that means, you see on page five, is that those counties are not eligible to receive funding, and that every year, I can ensure you $7 million in statewide housing funding that's targeted towards affordable and low-income housing. And you are not able to receive any of that money. So on page six next, you can see a breakdown of how that works. And what IFA does is they award out for regional housing trust funds, a base award of $150,000 and then $1.25 per capita based off of the potential areas 2010s population. So that means for what I'm proposing, or what we're proposing for a four-county housing trust fund, is that if you form a four-county housing trust fund, there would be the potential to receive $328,000 a year annually of funding that would go towards advancing affordable housing in the region with a required 25% local match. That means there'd be $410,000 available annually to go towards affordable housing. So on page eight, there is some administration that would come out of that, and the proposal would be that the administration would come out of the award made by IFA. So the local match portion would always stay in the region, and there would be no money that would come out of that that would always filter back into the communities. So I should also stop and mention here that when I mention that local match, I'm not here today to ask you for funding for that. The proposal would be that by forming the housing trust fund, accepting applications, the applicants themselves would take that local match. So for example, if a community would apply for $100,000 and say there's a 25% local match, the applicant would give the housing trust fund $25,000, and then the housing trust fund would turn around and give them $100,000. So it would never, there would never be a situation where we'd be asking for like a per capita match or anything like that. It would always either come from the applicants themselves or potentially any fundraising activities that would take place. So what that means on page nine is that the past five years, by not having a local trust fund, Warren County and the other counties have missed out on $1.6 million in state funding that could have been used for low and moderate income housing needs. Over 10 years, that's $3.2 million. Page 10, to give you an idea of the kind of activities I'm talking about, in essence, I am saying that all housing activities are up for assistance, technically new move-type family new construction, senior housing, housing demolition, as long as a house is placed instead, homeless shelters, domestic violence shelters, emergency repair programs. I'm not sure if Warren County has emergency repair program, but that would be eligible. Basically, anything that advances housing would be eligible under this housing trust fund. So the strategy then is to form, on page 11, is to form a four-county housing trust fund, receive funding to the next award date, which would be December of later this year. So then you would hire a funding administrator, it could be the NPO or because we already staffed planning organizations, SERPA, that reaches all these four other counties. I don't believe there's another organization set up that touches all four counties through this. And then making that local match requirement on a project basis. And the good thing about that is that TIPS aside, it can be used to meet that local match. So on page 12, in essence, what I'm talking about, what I'm talking about with the trust fund is that it is a flow-through organization. It would not be taking on projects itself. It would be funding cities, counties, organizations that already undertake housing projects already. So in essence, it would be a have-deaf mandate and other local housing trust funds, other housing agencies that would be applying for funding to be projects. The housing trust fund itself would not be doing actual projects. And the only two things that would not be taking place under this would be down payment assistance, since IFA already has a very robust program through that, and then single-family new construction, because have-deaf mandate oftentimes applies for state funding directly for that. In order to make sure that's still an eligible activity, we would just not sponsor that project, or that type of activity. So lastly, page 13, what the benefits to Warren County is, is you have access to over $300,000 a year in outside funding that's not currently available to affordable housing. There are minimal requirements to join, only a resolution supporting the housing trust fund, and in this case, putting two people onto the board itself. The proposed housing trust fund would not require dues, and only those same benefit would pay a local match. The administration would come out of the IFA board, so ensuring local match and local housing in the region, and it would close that housing trust fund gap and help make every area in the state of Iowa part of the housing trust fund. I do know that IFA is very excited to have all the counties under the housing trust fund, the potential of that anyway, and they're actually considering changing their administrative rules to ensure that Boone County can be part of this effort. So with that, I talked a lot. Do you have any questions for me? I'm standing.
You said that the $300,000 is, would be available to Warren County, but it's, that split turned off four of the counties, right?
It would, yes.
Doesn't really mean a whole lot for the housing.
You're right. It's not, it's not a, it was, it's not life-changing sums of money, but it is more money now than was currently available. And you, and let's say Warren County doesn't apply for anything in one particular year, you would not be required to pay the local match or anything. So it's not like you'd be out anything by doing this. But if you did have a project that you could do $250,000, $300,000 for, that would be have access to that rather than not.
So summarize, there is no downside to the local?
Hopefully, there is not, no. The only thing that I'm asking for today is the pass of that resolution, and then the commitment to send two representatives. I'm envisioning four meetings, five meetings for that first year, and then after that it's dropped down quite a bit, because it's a little bit to get an organization out and running. But it would, it would be one private sector, one public sector. It doesn't have to come from the county, it can be from the cities too. It just needs two people.
And you said Boone County has some administrative issues right now?
Right. So under current IFA rules, in order to form this organization, you have to be contiguous. So the very, these three counties, you, Marion, Jasper, and four. But then that would leave Boone County, you know, kind of the only one left with no one to go to. And as part of this effort, then it would also bring in extra dollars as well.
One quick question. Can you explain, for my benefit, why, why there are still four counties that have not signed up to this? It doesn't seem like there's much downside risk to it.
Sure.
Historically, is the reason, or are the reasons generally why we have four counties still in state?
Yes. On that slide, it shows all the housing trust funds. You'll notice a lot of those follow council government's boundaries. By having the council governments address the state of Iowa, those are the kind of opportunities that the council governments typically jump onto earlier and would then bring that to their region. Or lacking a regional entity that would cover something like this, we've just not had the push to do this until then. And if you looked at that map probably six, five years ago, half of those would not be there. So it is fairly recently that this has caught on, because people have seen the benefit of having access to that funding from the state legislature.
I know we do have the resolution, sorry, we don't have the resolution.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
We have Boone in a second. McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next agenda item is... Let's go back to our public hearing that is passed 6:05. So our public hearing regarding industrial waste pretreatment ordinance with possible action.
I'm Donna Bowman, I'm Assistant County Attorney for Warren County, and I was contacted by Ann DeNato about the county's ordinance in Chapter 34. This, our ordinance is called industrial waste pretreatment. Warren County is a member of the Waste Water Regulation Authority, along with several cities, including in our county, Coming, Norwalk, and then Greetham Plaza. This ordinance is, covers all of the issues regarding the wastewater treatment. And with your packet, within your packet, there's a map of where this wastewater treatment district is. Historically, Warren County had adopted only a couple of small portions of this particular ordinance. Ms. DeNato had, had you sent the, the whole ordinance that they would like Warren County to adopt. I have read through the ordinance. At this point, I would ask that the board continue with the second reading of this matter, because there are some things that I need to work out with the wastewater reporting people regarding the, some of the enforcement. We don't have like building code inspectors, we don't have the people to go in and close down, for example, the company or the restaurant that was violating, they would have the waste, the WRA would have to handle that themselves. So I need to work with them on trying to figure out the language that will fit within this, within our county. I will continue to work on that with the WRA, and I will get back to you with a clean copy, hopefully before the second reading. We've already set that second date for the hearing, which will be March 5th. We also set the third reading, which will be March 19th. Thank you. At this point, I would just ask that we continue and set, come back for the next hearing, and I will have a clean copy of the reading by then.
Entertain a motion to have a second hearing. We need to go to public hearing. Accept a motion to go to public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Do we go back to regular?
No, we haven't, we didn't have the time to go into our public hearing. Fine. Okay. Schol?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
Now we need to close out. Okay, well, is there anyone here to address the issue of wastewater at this time? Okay, now we can close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, McIntyre? Aye. Deco?
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Our next agenda item is three. We're going into another public hearing regarding the transfer of vacated alley to property owners in Beach with possible action.
So moved, do we go on to public hearing? Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Two of you will recall that we did a vacation of two alleys in Beach, the South Alley and the East West Alley. The board also agreed to convey a portion of the East West Alley to the homeowners who had land adjacent to that alley. However, we did not convey all of that particular land. Al Hayes, who owns property, and I believe there's a map with your documents, I guess. Mr. Hayes has asked that I bring this back before the board to consider conveying the vacated portion, the vacated north-south alley and the vacated portion on the east end of the east-west alley to the property owners. One of the reasons we didn't convey last time is because we had not had any agreement among the property owners about what should happen to that north-south and that portion of the east-west alley. I have sent letters to all of the owners, including Mr. Thomas and Ms. Wagner. They would be affected on both the north-south alley on the north half and the east-west portion of that east-west alley that has not been conveyed. Ben Hayes, who owns Lot 5, as it's marked on your map, has sent a letter to, addressed, to me to talk about he would be willing to relinquish his portion of that north-south, the north half of the north-south alley to Mr. Thomas. And Mr. Hayes is hopeful that that will allow Mr. Thomas to feel comfortable giving him the north half of the east-west alley. This is all very confusing, and I'm so glad I gave you a map, because I hope it helps. I know Mr. Hayes is here, if he'd like to speak to that matter. I have not heard from Mr. Thomas, and this is our first reading. It would be my suggestion to the board that we go ahead and set a second reading to give Mr. Thomas an opportunity to contact the board or to contact my office.
Can I ask you a question, Donna?
Yes.
Didn't we, didn't the board address part of this, and was it September?
We did.
And was that contentious in nature?
Yes. Yes. That's why we're back today, and why Mr. Hayes, Ben Hayes, has agreed to convey all of that alley to Mr. Thomas. And Mr. Thomas received a mail-in letter to Mr. Thomas explaining this to him, along with the same draw and the second hearing.
Okay.
Okay, we are in public hearing, so this part of the meeting is where we hear from you. So if you have anyone who's here to address this matter, please come out now.
Good evening. Al Hayes. Good to see you. I wasn't planning on getting up because I didn't really feel this way, but I hope that my doing this will prevent me from having to come to the next meeting to get what I wanted to say now. The reason there was no action taken on the north half and that north-south alley was because Kevin came here and said that he needed that for his driveway. It makes absolute sense. And that's why my son has agreed to deal or re- resell rights to the west half of that alley, which rightfully is as it stands. And I needed the entire alley that, that was my property on the north, and Kevin's property on the south. I'm going to add a garage to my house, and so I'll leave that space. That's it, the driveways on alleys, and without having access like that, that's what the original town was plotted out to have. That's how the garages are lined, and I hope you can see your way to do this all this time. Thank you.
May I ask you a quick question, sir?
Sure.
At that prior meeting in the fall, there was tension at a minimum. Have things sort of died down, or have the neighbors sort of reached this resolution collectively together, and come to this idea, or is it still? I can't ask you to speak for Thomas and Wagner, but what's your general thought regarding the proposal as a state?
Thomas doesn't live there. That house has been for sale for more than a year. So quite honestly, I haven't really had any contact with him, but I would think that he would be for this. This absolutely gives him a deed to the entire alley that he needs for his driveway. The only issue that I've ever had with, with those portions of those two alleys was Kevin wanted full access to both of them, and I have for more than a decade said, here, let's just come to a agreement. If you take this alley, I'll take that alley, one or the other, let's do something. And he would never do that. And now that he's, his house is for sale and he doesn't live there anymore, and he needs that for a driveway, we've already agreed, the intent of the county initially was to remove ownership of those alleys from the county, and this absolutely does that. And I think it does a big, incredible difference.
So Donna, do you think Mr. Thomas is all right?
I have not heard from Mr. Thomas. So I would ask that the board set a second hearing and allow him time to come in if he wants to, or to contact my office, and I'm making an effort again to get in contact with him.
I do the understanding that the county will at least make another effort or two to reach out to the affected homeowners, I'm sure you will.
Yes.
But I would certainly move to have a second reading on March 5th.
Yes, it's okay.
Drop of the gun.
That's okay.
I will go back to regular.
I'll second that.
Schol?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
So now...
How old am I? Same motion.
I'll second that. Same motion.
Can you restate that?
Sure.
I will move to have a second reading regarding the transfer of a vacated alley in Beach to be March 5th. Consider it march.
Do you second that? Okay, McIntyre?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Okay, we are on Amanda, item five. Consider approval of the joint public service agreement with the city of Coming with possible action.
Good evening. So nothing has essentially changed in the actual agreement. We have added a few minor things, but the teeth are still there from the previous agreement. The real change is just updating our city limits with Coming. We've taken off the real road, as it's known as, I believe, our 105. And since we do no longer touch it, it's fully, I guess, encompassed by Norwalk, Coming itself, and then if you go north of there, west of Wayan and Norwalk as well. So it's really just something, more formality to fix the city limits, and then we've also added a couple of paragraphs in there, just some clauses like we have in some of our other newer agreements. But if there's any questions on it, I can take those.
Any questions?
And the city has signed off on these, I believe, yesterday at 3:00.
That was the only question.
Okay, sorry.
Nope. I would move to approve of the joint public service agreement with the city of Coming. Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Okay, agenda item six, Consider Approval of the 288 Agreement for Farm-to-Market Extensions with the City of Coming with Possible Action.
So this is the same description. The last one was more updating city limits. This one updates the city limits, but involves the farm-to-market road through Coming, which is now just G14. So with that, update the city limits, it just affects the farm-to-market transfer we receive from the city of Coming, but still needs to happen. Basically, we're losing one mile of road there, as I mentioned before, which is the main change.
I'm presenting a motion to approve this 288 agreement.
I would, so moved. Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Deco? Okay, thank you. Agenda item seven, Consider Warning and Justice Center Commissioning Services Agreement with Possible Action. We received a letter from DCI Group asking us to enter into an agreement with Cornerstone Commissioning Incorporated. And in your packet, you will find a tabulation sheet which documents results from this legislative proposal to provide the commissioning services for the Warren County Justice Center. These were five firms that submitted proposals, and they were submitted on January 15, 2019. Everything should be in your packet. Is there anything that anyone wanted to bring out? If not, except a motion to approve Cornerstone Commissioning Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Schol?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda item eight, Consider Proposal for Food Service Facilities Design Consultant with Possible Action. The Food Service Facilities Design Consultant packet is in your packet, and this company, Rippey Associates, out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, they would like to help our Warren County Justice Center in their design of the food service area. So... So do you have any questions from the packet that you looked over? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved. Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Pico?
Aye.
Scholz?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're on agenda item nine, consider amendment to Shai Hattery Incorporated Agreement with Possible Action. According to our first agreement with Shai Hattery, the food service laundry consultants is actually an additional service provided by Shai Hattery. So this is to amend the contract. So do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Scholz?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Along with those two items we just approved, this last item is to consider designation of a project representative to act on behalf of the board of supervisors with respect to the food services facilities design with possible action. I've spoken to Vicki White, our nutrition director, and she has agreed to keep within the budget, about $200,000 to $250,000, which is what DCI had set aside for that. And within the space that is for the food service area, if she can consult with Shai Hattery and with the food services design consultant and keep within the budgets and space restraints, she is going to report back to us on her progress. And she was agreed to be that consultant. Any questions?
Yeah, can you explain the, I see the upper end of the number was 250. Can you explain sort of how they got to that or what exactly that entails? How are we arriving at 250?
Okay, it entails just the appliances and the equipment that would be in, and the construction of that area. There is $30,000 that aside for the consultant, so that's not part of that. So I'm asking Vicki White to stay within that budget and then, of course, that space requirement. So that's what that turns it. Does that answer your question?
So for appliances predominantly and where they go?
Appliances and construction of that area. Because it's going to have to be separated from the nutrition area, which is the congregate meals for elderly in Warren County, and a separate area for the inmates and the preparation of their food. Because they would be two separate funding sources, so they would need two separate areas. Now, if it can't be done within that budget area, within that budget constraint and space, then she will help them design one for the inmates' food service area. So what we're hoping to consolidate all of the six congregate meal sites we have, or five, so that we can better serve Warren County elderly.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Scholz?
Aye.
Pico?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, agenda item 11 is consider resolution authorizing the issuance and levying a tax for the payment of $20 million, $400,000, general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2019, with possible action.
This is the resolution to do the pre-levying for bonds that we intend to issue in fiscal year 20. My court prepared the paperwork. This allows you, as we went through the budget discussions, and we printed that pre-levying amount to collect the debt levy in fiscal year 20. This allows you to do that. And it needed to be passed prior to your budget certification on the 5th. So this is that paperwork that allows you to do that pre-levying. We have work sessions tomorrow with financial advisors. They can review all of this, make a recommendation. You can still at that budget hearing, if you determine that you don't want to do this pre-levying, if you may not be issuing, you can still change that at that time. But this needs to be a place to go forward. So I would recommend the board approve.
But I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Scholz?
Aye.
Pico?
Aye.
Thank you. In our budget report?
We have in our packets, fund balances as well as expenditures and revenues. We'll start with the fund balances. We are, this is through the end of January, so percentage wise, you would expect 58% to be, to be at that point. If we look at our fund balances to begin with, your numbers are a little bit skewed because we have bond proceeds in there. So you're looking at it and it's like, wow, we're up 75%. But those are bond proceeds. So if you take out the bond proceeds, you're at $13 million. So we're at about 6% increase from the prior year. Nothing is surprising there. Our general basic is down about 350, which makes sense because at the end of the fiscal year, that's about what we were down at that time. So no surprises in the fund balances. If you go to your expenditures, you've got, of course, we just came out of all of our budget meetings, so we've all looked a lot at every department and where they're at and what's going on. But we've got, again, using that 58 percentage ratio that we should be at at this point, we've got five budgets that are expenditure-wise trending higher than that. But all of them are due to a one-time payment or an annual payment that has come out. The auditor's office purchased laptops and their annual GIS payments. The conservation board did a land purchase for $391,000. The district court had approved sheriff transport costs around the beginning of the year. Your historical society is at 100%. It's a one-time payment that we need to done. And you have your general services. There's annual property and liability insurance has come out in July. So those are all going to trend upwards because of those payments. But overall, our expenditures are at 51%, so we're a little under 15. If you look at your revenues, again, these are a bit skewed because of the bond proceeds. So removing the bond proceeds, we're actually right at 58% for, for our revenues. Our second half of taxes will be coming in in March, so we'll see those, the big push for the rest of those revenues to come in toward that latter half. Just kind of a citation on revenues, we do have, within your general services, the revenues from the courthouse auction, $4,859.29, that's where the revenue is from, property auction. I just wanted to share that with the board. But other than that, nothing is surprising. Nothing's different from what we've been discussing at the budget. It's just kind of reference what we've been talking about. So is there any questions for me?
Thank you, so moved. Okay. I'd take a motion to receive and file reports for the recorder, veterans affairs, general assistance, and community society.
So moved. Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Scholz?
Aye.
Pico?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we've got supervisors' reports. Supervisor Scholz?
Yes, I attended the following meetings since our last meeting on February 5th. Warren County Economic Development, City of Indio, Chamber, I am you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Supervisor Pico?
Sure. Mary's budget meetings until approximately finished by all that evening. Meeting with the county attorney, meeting with the engineer, communications with the Norlocks mayor, with the administrator of the sheriff, received and responded to all the messages regarding our budget's recent snowfall. Hopefully that is soon to be behind us after this next round.
Thank you. Okay, my activities since our last regular board meeting, emergency management commission meeting to approve budget form was not met, so we scheduled a meeting for February 28th. Assessor budget approval meeting, finished up our budget meetings with the board supervisors for the county. Our budget hearing is on March 5th at 6:00 p.m. Met with Rudolph Insurance, and then we presented to the board a breakdown of our coverage. Met with 911 director concerning ongoing connectivity issues, online permitting, meeting with users and partners. ISIC's brick meeting, participated in EOC walkthrough, presented to Farm Bureau at monthly board meeting, attended the state 911 board meeting, the ISIC board meeting in Westin Way, emergency preparedness meeting with Public Health, met with DCI to confirm items for board approval, attended Milo City Council meeting, and I am now the representative for the Warren County Justice Center, attended two architectural and structural meetings, and had an interview with KCCI, who is doing an in-depth story about our 911 communication system set to air this Thursday. Okay, now this is our public input portion. So I know our Indianola chapter of FFA is here, and I believe they have a presentation for us. So there's, anyone else that would like to speak? Could we have them speak first, please? I don't see any, so we're going along.
So what they're going to present to you is called parliamentary procedure. It's a contest that they compete in in using exactly what you guys do in meetings of taking options and making seconds, having discussion. They have to show five different abilities in 10 minutes. Next Saturday, we host the contest hearing in Indianola, actually the first time in a long time. So they'll compete against eight other schools to go to state convention. And then when they go to state convention, they get bonus points for presenting in front of different boards that also utilize the same skills. So we'll be able to count this one if they advance next Sunday, or next Saturday. So it should take about 10 minutes, depending on their discussion.
Okay.
The meeting room will come to order. We are now holding a meeting of Indianola FFA parliamentary procedure team. Madam Chairperson, what is our first ability and item of business?
Your first ability is amend the main motion. Your first item of business is to donate flower baskets to hang on the square.
Refer our first item of business to donate flower baskets to hang on, hang on the square. And our first ability to amend the motion, this motion is amendable, is debatable, and requires a majority vote. What is the motion of the group?
Mr. Chairperson? I move that we donate flower baskets to hang on the square.
Mr. Chairperson, I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we donate flower baskets to hang on the square. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairperson?
May I?
Our square is looking a little rough because we just had a windstorm come through. These flowers will help regular this square, make it look nicer.
Mr. Chairperson? Yes. We have a flower shop in the town, and I didn't talk to them.
Mr. Chairperson, we should have these made by March 20th because spring's coming up and it'll give them enough time for the flower shop.
Mr. Chairperson, the streets around the square are also impacted by that windstorm pretty hard, and they are looking pretty rough too. Therefore, I move to amend the motion by inserting streets around the square, so the new motion now reads that we purchase flower baskets for the square and streets around the square.
Mr. Chairperson, I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to amend the motion by inserting streets around the square, so it now reads purchase flower baskets to hang on the square and streets around the square. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion passes. Is there any discussion on purchasing flower baskets to hang on the square and on streets around the square? Seeing none, I proceed to vote. All in favor, please stand up. All opposed same time. Motion passes. And then we assume the duties of the chair. Yes. Madam Chairperson, what is our second ability and item of business?
Your second ability is to refer to a committee. Your second item of business is to present two scholarships to graduating seniors.
Refer our next item of business to present two scholarships to graduating seniors. And refer our next ability to refer to a committee. This ability is debatable, is meant will require a majority vote. What is the motion of the group?
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we present two scholarships to two of our chapter members. Mr. Chairperson, I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we present two scholarships to our chapter members. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairperson? Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, ma'am.
This will be beneficial for our chapter because two of our seniors have worked really hard, and it will give them a boost in college. Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, ma'am.
We should look at our members' involvement at FFA and their GPA for our top two seniors to get this scholarship. Mr. Chairperson, seeing that, we have to look into our management grades, I would refer this to our scholarship committees so that they can look further into our senior grades and get two seniors. Mr. Chairperson, I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we refer this item of business to our scholarship committee so they can look into see what members should receive this scholarship. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I proceed to vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed same time. Motion passes. Honorable, please assume the duties of the chair.
Madam Chairperson, what is our next ability and item of business?
Your next ability is to volunteer at the local county fair. Your next item of business is to appeal the decision of the chair.
Refer our next item of business, or next ability to appeal this. It is debatable. It's not amendable and requires a majority vote for our next item of business to, to add.
Local county fair.
Local, at our local county fair. What is the motion of the group? Madam Chairperson? Ben?
That we volunteer at the local county fair.
Madam Chairperson, I second that. It's been properly moved and seconded that we volunteer at a local county fair. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairperson?
Ben?
We are not super busy as a chapter during the summer because we are not at school. And the county fair is a fun time that most members go to anyway, so it's a great opportunity for us to volunteer.
Madam Chairperson? Thank you. Last year, we volunteered at the cattle stand, and we made a profit off this, so I believe we should do this again.
Madam Chairperson?
Candy?
Last year, we also organized and coordinated a game called Redneck Games, and it consists of getting all the members throughout the county intertwined with each other to play games.
Madam Chairperson, I rise to a question of privilege affecting me slightly. See the point? It's getting really hot in here. Can we open up the window? Permission denied.
Madam Chairperson?
Candy?
I move to appeal the decision of the chair, making my spare point. All the members on the ring are being called. Madam Chairperson, I second that.
It's probably moved and seconded that we appeal the decision of the chair. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairperson?
Ben?
We ran out of water in here a couple hours ago, and the heater is on almost 80 degrees, so I think that it'd be a good idea to open up.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I proceed to vote. All in favor of sustaining the decision of the chair, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same time. Motion fail. The notes have it, motion failed, or maybe you can go open the window. Is there any further discussion on volunteering at a county fair? Seeing none, I proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Just when we assume the duties of the chair.
Madam Chairperson, we are ready for our next ability and item of business.
Your next ability is to take from the table. Your next item of business is to host a canned food drive for a local shelter.
Refer your next item of business to host a canned food drive for a local shelter. And you have, you have heard your next ability to take from the table. This is not debatable, not amendable, and requires a majority vote.
This is not debatable, not amendable, and requires a majority vote. What is the pleasure of the group? Mr. Chairperson? Yes, may I? I move that we take from the table the item of business to host a canned food drive for our local shelter.
Mr. Chairperson, I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we take from the table the motion to host a canned food drive for our local shelter. What, is there any discussion? No. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Is there any discussion on the motion to, uh, host a canned drive for our local shelter? Mr. Chairperson? Yes, may I? I talked to our local shelter and I think that it'd be a great idea to do this, especially in the month of March, so you can get many donations, because it's not around any holidays.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, may I? I could post a sign up sheet on our, uh, activities board and see how many members would be willing to donate cans.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, may I?
In order to receive a fair amount of cans, if I will, we should set up a number of cans for each member, being ten cans.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please stand up. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Mark, may I, would you submit the use of the chair?
Yes. Madam Chairperson, what is our final ability and item of business?
Your final ability is to lay on the table. Your final item of business is to organize a pumpkin carving contest in the elementary school.
You refer our final item of business to organize a pumpkin carving contest in the elementary schools, and you refer our final ability to lay on the table. This ability is not debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. What is the pleasure of the group?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, can you?
I move that we host a pumpkin carving contest in the elementary school. Madam Chairperson, I second that.
It is been properly moved and seconded that we host a pumpkin carving contest in the elementary schools. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, can you?
This will be a great way to get future members involved in our chapter to see what we're all about. Madam Chairperson?
Yes, then?
We do this every year, and it's a blast. All of our members get to pair up with an elementary student, and they can grow and learn together.
Madam Chairperson? Yes, ma'am. Seeing that school starts in five minutes, I move to lay this item of business on the table.
Madam Chairperson, I'll second that.
It is been properly moved and seconded that we made the item business of hosting a pumpkin carving contest for the elementary schools on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, ma'am. I'm to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chairperson, I'll second that.
It is been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you.
We're parliamentary procedure. My lot.
It's wonderful to see people of your age taking an interest in parliamentary procedure. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next, um, meeting date is the sixteenth. Item, it is March fifth at nine thirty. So I have a motion for adjournment.
Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Fico?
Aye.
Scholz?
Aye.
I'm in the dirt. I don't know how to grow.